Good evening and welcome to the meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors for August 18, 2016. I totally apologize, we were in an executive session which we will announce shortly. We're going to have an update first, then we'll start our meeting.
Remember, we want you to take these home, charge them at home every night.
Hi, I'm Kristen Landis, Director of Technology, and today is our first Chromebook Distribution Day. Today, we're at Penbrook Middle School and we're distributing Chromebooks for grades six through nine, which includes some sending elementary schools. So we have over 600 parents registered today. And as you can see behind me, the lines are long and people are excited. So when we took a look at what we needed to do to fulfill their requirements of strong public education in the 21st century, we looked at what device makes sense, and we chose Chromebooks because they're easy to use, they're cost-effective, we've got a great three-year complete care warranty on them, which the parents are helping us to pay for, so that we could provide a device for every student to be learning in the digital age.
This is very exciting. I'm very happy that we're able to do this.
I think it's awesome. I think it's going to be a lot less books to carry, a lot less work for us to do, because now that they're familiar with how to use the computer.
Molly, how do you feel?
I really like this, and I think it's going to be easy to do homework and stuff.
No limits to what I can do at home, at school. No excuses of getting work done, looking stuff up. Everything's cool. It's got touchscreen and all that. It's pretty cool, and I like it.
Well, we're excited because kids these days are into anything electronic, whether it's an Xbox, or an iPhone, or anything else. And Cal already has a laptop that he uses constantly. A Chromebook would just be great, and I'm interested to see how the school's going to use it and integrate it with the curriculum.
When you open it up, it's going to automatically turn on for you.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, again. And again, I apologize for coming in late. The board did meet in executive session tonight, August 18, 2016, from roughly 6:00 PM to 7:35 PM, to discuss matters of personnel. We're going to move forward with our favorite part of the meeting, which is our recognition of proclamations. Let's turn it over to Dr. Dietrich, and then we can bring in Zach and Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. It is our pleasure this evening to recognize one of our students who also attends North Monco Technical Career Center. And with us this evening, we have Jane Mitchell to make the presentation.
Nice, Jack.
Good evening. My name's Jane Mitchell. I'm culinary arts instructor at North Monco Technical Career Center, and I deliver the front-of-house curriculum. And I'm very fortunate to oversee the operations of our student-run restaurant. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Zachary Frusciotto. Zach had been a student of mine for the past three years, and over that time, I've witnessed his determination, hard work, and passion for an industry that he loves. Zach competed in restaurant service at the Skills USA District Competition this past fall against 11 other students from other area technical and career centers. He achieved first place and moved on to state competition this past spring in Hershey, PA. At the state level, he also competed against 11 other students statewide and excelled, winning the first gold medal once again. After many hours of hard work and perfecting his craft, he headed off to the national competition in June to compete against 32 other students from across the country in Louisville, Kentucky, and he brought home the gold one more time. Let me briefly give you a little background on what is involved in this competition. Contestants are tested on all areas of etiquette and the skills required for the front-of-house service of a fine dining restaurant. The focus is on guest service and guest relations in the dining room, including reservation procedures, table setup, greeting guests, presentation of menus, description of food and drinks, specials of the day, wine service, table-side service, taking orders, serving and clearing the tables after each course, copy cappuccino espresso service, preparation and presentation of checks, and closing remarks. Contestants are judged on personal appearance, table-size manner, and professionalism, and ease with guests, courtesy, general knowledge, technical and verbal skills. This was not an easy feat. After many hours of practice, changes in the scope, and general nervousness, Zach once again excelled. Zach will be attending the Culinary Institute of America this fall. He received a full scholarship, a full-ride scholarship, because of winning the national competition. So he'll be headed to Hyde Park, New York in November. So I, along with North Monco Technical Career Center, am very proud of Zach's accomplishments, and I'm proud to have been his teacher, and I would like to personally thank everyone who supports the restaurant at North Monco that gave Zach the opportunity to practice his restaurant skills. It is my honor tonight to introduce you to Zachary Frusciotto.
This is for you. You have a chance to be thanked by the full administration and the board, and Mrs. Mitchell, would you please join her again?
Oh, sure.
I like that patch.
Congratulations. Hey, great job.
Thank you.
This is for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And come see us in the restaurant. I know you're going to be there. Thank you.
What, do you get free meal or something? Another round of applause for that. That is awesome. All right, we're going to move our action agenda forward, and right now, it is a time for anyone who wishes to speak to the board, please step forward. This is the Audience of Citizens. Please state your name and address, and sign our Audience of Citizens logbook.
Good evening, and my name is William Patchell. I reside at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. It's actually Montgomery Township, but we use their post office. And it's good to see everyone here, and I know that we're going to have another fantastic year, and have input, and everybody bring something to the table. Their only interest is for the district to excel and to be acknowledged by the State Department of Education as one of the premier school districts in the Commonwealth, and probably in the country. I was kind of shocked to see that Montgomery Township is rated number 53 of townships in the entire country. That's based on certain criteria like house prices, employment, this well-run. So I was kind of shocked. I guess I figured right 25 years ago when I moved here. Last week, well, the last meeting that I attended, a gentleman read me a manifesto that they would no longer have contact, interaction, not answer the telephone, and not talking to me. That could actually be a very positive thing, but which led me to believe, and I talked to our solicitor there, and he says, "Oh, no, they do not have to talk to you, they do not have to reply to you." So I'm bringing this information to the public so that they're well aware of that, that the people that I elect to serve the district can choose if they want to, "Oh, no, I'm not answering that," which I find kind of despicable in a republic or democracy. When you run for this job, you've got to stand up at a plate and answer for it, and accept things that are bad, take credit for things that are good. But it's just, it's kind of a bewilderment to me that an individual could do that. But maybe some of the people in the districts would like to call 215-361-6017 and have a talk with this person on the board, and maybe they could get some questions on why we have some of the people here never have voted down one spending proposal. I mean, it's almost like it's a disease, like, you know, a spendaholic. I believe some of the people have used in Harrisburg, they've called some of the representatives spendaholics. But, you know, that's a very rough-and-tumble place, and we are more respectful of the individual here at the district at the school board. Okay? Now, I read in the North Penn Reporter about the containment ponds. They did get the funding, but it's still open for public. They are going to meet, and they're still talking about it, and about the drainage at the middle school. I just can't help but thinking, wow, we just got it in time, and I wonder if we ever thought about the Zika virus. Okay? What are we going to do about, oh, there's standing water there. Oh, yeah, we're going to have to go out and spray it all the time. Nobody ever thought about this? I don't think that's a good idea. We gave them the land, they said, "Oh, no, they're taking possession of it." What do we get? What do we get? Who are we going to call up and say, "Oh, yeah, one of the teachers or one of the kids has Zika virus now?" And you know very well, standing water, I'm sure down in Louisiana, after they got half the state flooded, they're going to have their hands full with Zika virus or whatever it is. And, you know, I don't think that's anything to play around with, and I wouldn't make an environment to be able to accommodate those mosquitoes. I think of a better, we're doing just fine now without the standing water. Now, I'm going back to my old topic again. This is five, this will be six years, I'm talking about the concussions. You went from five to 11. That is not acceptable. I'm telling every parent here, if your kid has a concussion, or your young man has a concussion, to not allow him to go play that sport anymore, because there is scientific evidence that early Parkinson sets in, not knowing the number of concussions that you have. They're starting to find out, wow, when you're 40, you want to get Parkinson's? It's not a good way to live the rest of your life. And there's a tie between this, and all the bad things are coming out of the box now. Pandora's box is open, and I'll tell you what, we went from five to 10. That is not acceptable. I'm going to be on top of this over and over and over again, until someday, maybe the district, oh, yeah, we don't offer that anymore. Like one district over in New Jersey, which I think they made a wise move, because the parents actually cut off the number of people that are playing the sport. Okay? And finally, this is all I'm going to say, about the reduction in waste. I talked to Dr. Dietrich about the waste, and we went from $100 and something thousand dollars down to $91,000. Now, I think there are major businesses in the country that are not really producing any more waste, they find a way to get rid of it, they reduce what waste they have. You tell the vendors, "Oh, no, those pallets, the boxes, this, that, take it with you. I'm not throwing your stuff away." And then I think we need to renegotiate the contracts. What we had said every year, I don't care what it is, it's nice to build a friendship with somebody, but in a day where every dollar counts, I want these negotiations going to every year, no, you have to prove, you did a fantastic job, you can get it again. Every single year, and that's what every business is doing down. A lot of people don't like competition, they don't like having to answer for what they do, they don't like to do a lot of things. But I tell you, in a free-market capitalistic system, competition is driving the prices down, and a lot of people have fixed costs that they really can't contain, and they really don't know what to do with it. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Ben? Anyone else, please, tonight? Hold on, Frank. Frank, hold on, we have an Audience of Citizens, please. Somebody stepping up.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Dwayne Spencer. I live at 1125 Bloomfield Circle in Lansdale. I'm the parent of a fifth grader at Inglewood. And about 11 months ago, I introduced myself as a new board liaison for the Inglewood's Home and School Association, so you've probably seen my face here for most of last year's school board meetings, and I appreciate the effort everyone puts in here, both on a volunteer and a paid basis. Just recently, I became aware of an issue involved in some of the redistricting that occurred involving Inglewood and several other schools, and reductions in class sizes, and reassignment of some staffing that has significant, or will have a significant impact on some of our students in the fourth grade at Inglewood. And although it's not included in tonight's packet, I'm concerned that that action and that information is not readily available. As a board liaison, I provide a lot of communication back to our Home and School Association and our parents in order to keep them informed, so that they don't have to attend or watch the board meetings, and keep them aware of what's going on in the district outside of Inglewood and in what is involving Inglewood. Every month, I report on the personnel actions, on Inglewood personnel, as in teacher and staff leave of absences and reassignments and things like that. And so when I don't see it in tonight's packet, I'm concerned, and I don't have all the factual information, and I appreciate the challenges that the board and Dr. Dietrich and the staff have in maintaining schools and school sizes and staffing. But my concern here is that this is somewhat of an 11th-hour change in what occurred right before the beginning of this school year, and with all the other changes that were going on with redistricting involving Inglewood, and class sizes, and projection of class sizes throughout the second half of last year. To have something occur at the 11th hour is concerning for me, and I just express an interest to have the board look at planning a lot more in-depth, and I think that was discussed towards the end of the redistricting, that we take a closer look at what is and what could happen, so that these changes that occur and impact students and families and teachers, and the ability for curriculum to be produced at a very short notice or changed at a very short notice doesn't have any negative impact on our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Wayne, you should be aware that those numbers are actually changing almost hourly every day.
I can appreciate the changes.
Yeah, dozens of people standing there.
I don't have an answer, but I just hope for better planning or better projections, if at all possible.
Well, I can appreciate that, because it's, like I said, I've come over here multiple times this weekend, and I'm telling you, there's dozens of people standing there waiting to register their kids for schools, so it's changing every hour. And the updates are almost being sent to each school almost every hour now. That's how close we are to the end.
It is changing. As he said, I've been here a couple of times, the room's always crowded. You said Inglewood, what grade?
Fourth grade, is my understanding, of Mrs. Dueling, who happened to be my son's teacher last year, very, very good student for some of the challenges my son had, is being reassigned because of a drop in class size for fourth grade, and the need to reassign her to another school where her need was...
One of the nice things about at least last year, and it's holding true for this year, last year, we had 299 sections. 152 were not at, but were below the classroom guidelines. That's a good thing. Right now, fourth grade, as of Friday night, this is outdated because of all the kids we've seen. We're getting daily updates from Betty over there. Okay? This is two days, four days old now. But right now, you're averaging 27 kids for the fourth grade, and the guideline is 25 to 29. Now, one of the things I've tried to explain to everybody, these projections are great. On average, North Penn, within North Penn, about an average of 600 homes a year are bought and sold. Many of those parents who leave don't tell us. That's why we go by the 10th-day enrollment for whether we add a section or not. Parents just leave, they don't tell us, but the new kids are probably coming in. So this is last-minute stuff. This will change significantly over, we'll get one, I guess, in the next couple of days. There's Betty over there. And we monitor this, and then she makes our recommendation to Dr. Dietrich on whether we add a class or where we go from that. But usually, for the most part, as I said, we're usually, most of our, half of our sections are under the guidelines, and that's a good thing.
And I appreciate that. My concern is, we now have, we're within two weeks of start of school, and we have teachers having to adjust some of the planning they put in place prior to this point, and make appropriate curriculum for the students' work, based on these last-minute changes that we're encountering, you're encountering. And is there a way to protect that somehow? And I don't know how you regulate it, so you guys know the rules.
Let Dr. Dietrich answer that.
It's impossible.
Let Dr. Dietrich answer that.
Appreciate your concern. As Mr. O'Donnell said, right now, in fourth grade at Inglewood, we do have 27 students per classroom, so we have 81 students in three sections. You are correct in that there was a teacher that anticipated teaching in fourth grade that was told a couple of weeks ago that she's going to have to teach in a different building because she would be needed there more, and that if we would have gone with four sections with those number of students, we would have been substantially under the class size guidelines. So right now, we're at 27. We actually heard today there's going to be another withdrawal, so we'll be down to a 126, a 27, and a 27. So that does put us well within the class size guidelines right now. Thank you so much for your concern.
You should also know, Wayne, when those last-minute changes come about, we always give the staff members additional support and days to actually do whatever they have to do to make those changes.
The bottom line is, it's the students and whether the teachers are prepared adequately.
It's very difficult to plan for decisions that haven't been made yet.
Staffing and class sizes is very well important, and Inglewood's been challenged with some classroom physical size versus enrollment sizes, so I think you know that already. We're just concerned about that.
Appreciate that, Wayne. Appreciate your input. Thank you, Wayne. Anyone else? By the way, while she signs in, you should know, I used to have Wayne's job when I was in Inglewood.
Dwayne's a saint for taking that job. We thoroughly appreciate what he does for us. My name is Kristen Kimball, and I live at 946 Woodlawn Drive in Lansdale. Sorry, I'm writing while I go here. Like Dwayne, I don't have a fourth grader this year. My son was with Dwayne's son, Daniel, last year. Our most, our biggest concern here is replacing that fourth section at Inglewood. I think we can all agree that smaller classrooms provide greater opportunities for participation, individual attention, improved instruction, and in turn, these things have a major impact on students' achievements, their behaviors in class, and their attention span. Courtesy of our enrollment capping, which seems to, you know, be working out well so far for this year with kindergarten and first grade, we have space for that fourth section in our building. So I don't have a kid in this grade, but my thought process is, why are we shoving them all together when we have space for them to breathe? What are we going to do with that classroom if we don't put students in it? And the curriculum for all of our kids gets harder, more rigorous with each year. This year's fourth graders have to adapt to departmentalization, along with everything else they have to encounter. Again, we have the space, can we not use it to benefit our students? My perspective here tonight is slightly different than those you'll hear after me. In dissolving one section from that fourth grade, Inglewood lost one of its greatest teachers. My daughter was lucky enough to have her twice in kindergarten, and then again in fourth grade. Mary Jo Dueling is a seasoned, tenured teacher who was moved out of a testing grade and replaced with a primary teacher with no experience with such the demanding curriculum. The fourth grade teachers have been working all summer long with not only their curriculum, but the new departmentalization, you know, based on four classrooms. They worked so that it would be seamless for our kids, because, you know, they care that much about them. They want it to be successful for them. Not only is Mrs. Dueling one of Inglewood's greatest teachers, she's become a great friend to many of us. She's one of the most vested teachers we have in the classroom, as well as our kids' personals, activities, and lives. I would ask you for two things tonight. Please reinstate that fourth section for Inglewood's incoming fourth graders, because now more than ever, these kids need that individual attention and the best instruction they can get. I also ask that you please bring back Mary Jo to teach that section. She's one of the most committed teachers that Inglewood has. I've known her for nine years, can't even imagine Inglewood's hallways without her. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes?
No, ma'am, here.
Oh, sorry, Frank.
Again, we've all said it.
Right.
If you happen, if you have nothing to do, mosey on in here tomorrow and watch, I assume you still have registration tomorrow.
Right, the numbers change.
It is, Monday morning, there was like two groups, like 10 kids were registering. So Friday night, we were down six kids compared to last June 5. Who knows where we are? That room is packed with kids.
Right.
At the moment, as of Friday night, there was only one section available in Inglewood. So depending on where the kids come in, that could be forced to be used by any grade level.
Sure.
So they don't know. We do the best we can.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Of the average of the 600 homes, usually, the new parents register the kids. I was at one school Monday morning, and I'm told many parents, they leave and they don't tell us. So we have to wait. You may be frustrated because, oh, your kid's in there first day, second day. That's why we go by the 10th-day enrollment.
Right.
We live and die by that. And then that's when Betty and they collaborate and get together, and they get together with the board real fast, and usually, if it's needed, yes. And if the space is there. If the space is not...
By those vacating parents who aren't telling you that they're leaving. That's vacating, we're incoming, which I appreciate both sides of this.
That's a frustration. Every year, that's a frustration with all of us.
Sure.
There's nothing we can do. Yeah, we ask them sometimes how we here. I was told Monday morning by one principal, it's when kids leave here and they go to Satterton, and then Satterton verifies they were here. Then we find out, oh, cross them off. They didn't tell us, but we find out when they register some by sales because they went through records.
Sure.
So we try to, we help everybody we can. Like I said, there was 152 out of 299 sections last year that were under the guidelines because we used the space. If we have it, we do it. We would love to have 10 kids in a class, but we can't. We just don't have the space.
Sure.
But we will do whatever we can. Trust me, we will. And by the way, I have dialogue with reasonable people all the time, and if you have a concern, 215-361-6017, you call me anytime. The statement I read off before was approved by my attorney.
Fantastic. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kristen. Anyone else, please?
My name is Laurel Kennedy, and I live at 976 Woodlawn Drive in Lansdale. My daughter Mara is a fourth-grade student at Inglewood this year, and I was greatly distressed to learn that we were going to lose that fourth section. And, you know, I don't know what happened to the 11 kids, but last year, there were 92 kids in this grade level, and this allowed for classrooms of 25 students or less, which I believe is, you know, ideal for the foundations of learning while they're taking place. And my daughter's been struggling in school since first grade. Initially, she had trouble with reading, but thanks to the Title I program and the summer reading program, she was able to make great strides in a smaller setting. And for the last couple of years, that struggle has turned towards math with the new Go Math program. And last spring, she was identified with a learning disability and now has an IEP. And I believe it's going to be detrimental to her success in math, being in these larger classes. I, myself, am a middle school math teacher in the neighboring school district, so I know firsthand how larger class sizes can affect student achievement. I prepare my students every year for the PSSA and for the Algebra Keystone Exam, and I rarely have more than 25 students in my class. With the increased expectations of state testing and the incredible difficulty of the Go Math program, it's upsetting to me that North Penn decided that larger classes is a good option. These students need as much individualized attention as they can get by a certified teacher in order to be proficient on the skills that they are asked to demonstrate today. I'm also aware that once this section is gone, it's not coming back. So that means, you know, for the next three years, my daughter's going to be in a class of MS30, finishing out, you know, the end of elementary school when they're the most important years, because they're preparing them for the challenge of secondary education. Grades four, five, and six all contain demanding state testing, along with increasingly Grades 4, 5, and 6 all contain demanding state testing along with increasingly difficult curriculum. So, the question is, why make the classes larger at this stage? This should be a time when class size is decreasing so that we can ensure the success of each of our students. My daughter, along with many others, has only occasionally performed at a proficient level for the last few years in smaller classes. What is going to happen to her and these other kids who struggle when the classes are even larger? I urge you to please reconsider this and bring back our 4th section of 4th grade at Inglewood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Anyone else, please?
My name is Erin Crowley, and I live at 1290 Mark Drive in Lansdale. My daughter, Ryan Crowley, will be attending 4th grade at Inglewood this school year. Ryan has had an IEP since kindergarten. She has challenges with socialization and academics. She is progressing enough for her not to change schools. We were notified this week that we will only have three 4th grade classrooms rather than four. 81 students divided into three classrooms is too much for an average student, let alone my daughter that has challenges. 4th grade students are still learning basic skills for their future. When we add the 4th classroom back in, this would allow 21 students per class. The curriculum is so much harder than when I went to school. I know many parents at Inglewood that have expressed their concern because their children are struggling as it is and they don't have an IEP. As more kids are in a classroom, there is more opportunity for academic struggles along with behavior problems. I excelled in a smaller class environment in school, as I'm sure most do. Inglewood is capped with our incoming kindergarteners and existing 1st graders. Why should our 4th graders suffer with making class size larger when the cap was to allow the classes to stay the same? Please explain to me why this decision has been made. And furthermore, in closing, if there are 81 students in 4th grade and the cap is 30 per class, I would also like to recommend that my daughter have a class no more than 21 in her class.
Ma'am, do me a favor. Would you load the microphone?
Sure.
I use T-coil.
I'm sorry.
For that. What was your comment about kindergarten?
We have a cap now at Inglewood for kindergarten and the existing 1st graders.
Right, you're 20 kids down.
Okay, well, we're looking at the 4th grade class.
And you heard Dr. Dietrich talk about that?
Yes, I did. And we all have the same concerns.
And at the moment, as of Friday night, there was one section open. That could change over the, from Monday to the next two weeks. That could increase, decrease, and even the 10th day enrollment. That's when, so you don't get frustrated when, why aren't they making decisions? My kid's been going to school for two weeks. We wait for 10th day to make those decisions.
Can we ask what happens when that decision comes about? I mean, do you add that teacher and then divide the students into that extra classroom? How exactly are we notified? How are the kids? The kids are adapting to their first two weeks of school. That's the struggle as it is. And then you're going to put them into another class? That's, that to me is.
Well, but what do we do?
It's crazy.
Do we keep it?
I understand, I understand that you guys, I commend you on your job. You have a very tough job. I would not want it. But my concern is, is that you have kids already trying to adapt to their first two weeks of school.
I agree.
And then you're going to take them and put them in a new class with a new teacher? I mean, that's just crazy to me.
But it's for the better, and you know that.
You have to look at the whole.
Right now, we don't know it's the better because we know we're not going to get this classroom back if we don't have it now.
You have to, you have to look at the whole district as a whole. I mean, I think.
I'm not looking at the district. I'm looking at our kids.
Well, I understand. I'm trying to explain to you how we have to look at things, you know what I mean? We try, I mean, everyone has an idea of how we can predict. We're not with Krista Ball. We don't know how many people are going to be actually in those classrooms until the 10th day enrollment. I'll be telling you, I've been around for a while.
I'm not, I'm not discounting that you're telling me something that's fabricated. My, my thing is, is that I just learned last night, and I was heartbroken by this.
Yeah, I understand that.
I have a niece and nephew that were in 1st grade at Culp last year.
Yeah.
They had 30 kids in their 1st grade class. That's the guideline? That's ludicrous.
25 is the guideline.
For 1st grade, they had 30.
26.
They had 30. I was told that last night by my sister-in-law.
I don't think so.
We would've spotted that.
I think that person was wrong. That's not correct. I don't think that's correct. It's not lie. Is that true?
I would not think that my sister-in-law would lie to me about that.
Do me a favor.
Wait, 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 wait.
I would, I would have to go back and look that up, to be honest with you.
Would you please?
That sounds high to me, but I would have to, I would have to go back and check on that.
We'd like to know.
I would love to know that. I'm interested.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, I'm going to move the agenda forward. We're going to start with the recommended approval of the minutes of the July 21, 2016 action meeting as circulated. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments, questions about the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move forward with our committee reports. I'll start with Mr. Schilling for Support Services.
Yeah, our Support Service Committee has not met since the last board meeting. Our next meeting will be held Monday, August 29 at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Mr. Schilling did request the floor to make some comments under Other Business for one of our departing senior administrators, Mr. Schneider. So, you can do it, do it under Other Business. Okay. Let's move forward with ECP, Education, Community, and Policy. Mrs. Leonard?
Thank you. The ECP committee met on August 8. During that meeting, the committee reviewed an action item as well as informational updates. The action item, which is on the agenda this evening, concerns a school enrollment projection study. Since this is an important element of the district's ability to properly plan for future enrollment needs, and it was also supported by community members, the district solicited an enrollment projection study proposal from the Montgomery County Planning Commission. According to the proposal, numerous factors will be researched and analyzed to prepare the study, such as population changes, birth patterns, school district and alternative school enrollment history, housing sales activity, proposed and approved housing starts, enrollment trends for multifamily housing, and anticipated turnover areas. If approved, this study will commence in February 2017 with completion expected in May 2017. The cost of this project will be $9,180. Other topics on the agenda were of an informational nature. The committee received a presentation concerning the Overdrive Digital Library Initiative. This was piloted at Pendale Middle School in May 2016 and will be implemented throughout the district for the 2016-17 school year. During this pilot period, over 800 books were checked out online by students. Funding for this program was provided by the Verizon Grant and the KTO Grant. The committee also received an update on the advertising efforts for the 2015 school year. Revenue for this year was a little over $25,000, which was more than double that of the previous school year. One overnight student trip was reviewed as well. The next ECP committee meeting will be held on September 12 at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the ECP this evening? All right. Thanks. Let's move forward with Finance. Mr. O'Donnell.
Okay, Finance Committee report for Thursday, August 18, 2016. The regularly scheduled meeting for July was canceled. However, the regular monthly financial reports were still posted online at the Finance Committee link on the North Penn website. Our next meeting will be here Monday night, August 29 at 6:30 PM in Conference Zoo Mae at the ESC, right here. End of report. Thank you.
Any questions to Finance? Who's got personnel tonight?
I've got it.
Thank you. Mrs. Prokowsky.
Personnel Committee met in executive session on August 2, 2016, from 5:30 PM until 6:30 PM to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, and potential litigation. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Murphy, North Penn Educational Foundation.
Thank you. The foundation held its 15th annual golf outing on Monday, and it was our best yet. We raised more than $26,000.
Really?
And thanks to all of you, too. Closest we ever came to this amount was back in 2007, when we raised about $24,000. I can't thank our sponsors enough for their support and for the golfers who survived a very hot day. In addition to a great time on the course, golfers retreated to a lunch by Tex Mex. The outing was so popular this year that we had to turn golfers away. Next year's will be held on Monday, August 14, so you may want to mark the calendar now. Earlier today, the foundation welcomed all new teachers in its second annual Reedus Icebreaker. We had a wonderful time getting to know our newest educators and also tell them about the opportunities provided by the foundation. The foundation's annual report is now ready and can be found online. I hope you take a moment to read through the report. It is truly remarkable how far we have come as an organization. When we began, we brought in about $10,000 a year. Well, last year, that number grew to $100,000, and I can proudly say that the foundation has raised more than $1 million since its inception in 1988. As always, the money funds innovative projects for our students that inspire and motivate them in their academic studies. The educators who implement these programs are commended for their dedication to our students. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Information can be also found online at www.northpenn.org/foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Awesome report. Safe Schools, Mr. Schilling.
Yeah, the Safe Schools Committee has not met since the last board meeting. The next meeting of Safe Schools Committee is scheduled for 6:00 PM Monday, September 12, prior to the ECP meeting here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. Diazio.
The Joint Operating Committee met on Monday, August 5, 2016. Very briefly, we welcomed a new superintendent of record for the next year, Mr. Frank Gallagher from the Satterton Area School District. Will be serving as a superintendent of record for North Monco for the upcoming school year. The committee also received an update on the roofing project that was going on over the summer at North Monco. At the time, the roof was at approximately 92% completion, and substantial completion is expected by the end of this, this week. The project was on budget and did remain on time, and the committee was happy to receive that update. A couple other highlights worth noting. The new school year will bring a new website design for North Monco, so I encourage everyone to check that out. The building's been painted, new benches have been installed, so the building looks very good on the outside, and students will return on August 30. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions to the North Monco Technical Career Center?
Excuse me, just as a correction for the notes for the minutes, they met on August 15, correct?
Correct, August 15, yes.
Oh, you said, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Leonard. And congratulations on Skills USA. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
We did not meet in July, but we will meet next Wednesday evening, and we will kick off on the 24th of morning at North Penn High School. So, the IU begins then. So, thank you, North Penn.
Excellent. Thank you. Let's move forward with our superintendent report tonight. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend approval of a settlement agreement with student 0818161.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval to rescind North Penn School District student 05191616 prior to approval for completing the school year on a tuition basis.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky. Second, people. Second by Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of an expulsion for student 0816162, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent. The student's parents' guardians have waived their rights to an expulsion hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of North Penn School District resident tuition-free, 40 school days maximum, four students, 0818163, 4 and 5, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions to this issue?
These are students who are going to be establishing residency within the very beginning of the year, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the agreement with North Penn Water Authority regarding the Thorndale bus stop location per item BA 4A through D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions?
I just want to thank everybody that was involved in getting this agreement across the finish line. We solved a big problem here, and I'm glad we were able to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it really was a collaborative effort. Everybody got involved. Everybody got a chance to go out, see the place. And it was nice to be able to work with everybody in North Penn Water Authority, get some credit there, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'd like to thank our solicitor for being, you know, the best, solving the agreement problems. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval for a school enrollment projection study to be conducted by the Montgomery County Planning Commission for a cost of $9,180 per item 7516A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Prokowsky. Got a motion in a second. Any comments or questions to this issue?
Yes.
Frank, why don't you go?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You can go first.
I had already pointed out in the email to board members, and as you've already heard my comments to the people that were here, that we don't know, that we always go by 10th day enrollment. I was also deeply appointed, when I went to the ECP meeting, that we didn't use our own staff who routinely produced half of that report. That was my disappointment. That's why I can't support this motion. And I don't believe anything we get from anybody is going to tell us anything because of those average 600 homes, us, you know, that we buy and sell, and the people don't tell us when they leave. You can have all the reports in the world, but it's not going to tell us anything until the 10th day enrollment. So, that was my only comment. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments to this issue? I'd like to throw my two cents in the hat, since I've been around long enough to know. I mean, between the Pennsylvania Economy League and all the other groups we've ever used to do enrollment projections, I mean, nothing was as big a disappointment as the Pennsylvania Economy League. Three years out, we were almost two empty schools full.
True.
You know, the numbers that, a lot of this data is built on, and I kind of give Frank some kudos on this one, because we have been able to do this better for ourselves than anybody else. But we've never tried the planning commission from the county. I don't know if they know anything more than we can actually get ourselves from the municipalities.
Well, I'll put my two cents in.
Yeah, I want to, because I'd like to hear what you guys have to say. Because I read through their proposal. We do, we have in the past, when we've done our own reports, we've done more than that ourselves.
And actually, what we get, we get things from the zoning officers that are in the pipeline that have not reached the county.
Yeah, I know that. That's why I want to hear.
But we get, we would get different things from this study, and it's long, it's long-range. And as chairperson of the ECP Committee, I get those folks in here all the time asking, "What are your long-range plans? What are your long-range plans?" And until we can figure out where our population shifts are, and it's not necessarily where new housing starts are, but where are the shifts? Where are the, where are the larger populations coming in? We need to have a long-range plan and to determine where schools are overcrowded and where we need to perhaps move boundary lines. I'm at every meeting at ECP where we're moving 30 families here and 20 families here, and next year, the same 30 families are going back to the same school. So, I think it would be a valuable tool. I think it's totally different than the studies that you've used before. I think the software and the information has to be far greater than what you would receive from the county. And I need to point out that we don't have a staff member now to do this report anyway. So, I think, I think it would be money well spent.
We do. Tom's Department had routinely produced us five or six times.
But...
Susan, do you think that they're going to be able to produce? When they talk about the population shifts, one of the, one of the bigger concerns I've always had, especially with the new developments through EQIS and, you know, the SEP, the SEP changes and some of the housing things that they're doing with apartments and things like that. Like, I know that one of my bigger concerns has always been, first, obviously, we can't plan for a decision that hasn't been made yet. You know, somebody decides to sell their house next year, or next month, or three months from now. That's impossible to really plan for. But the population shift idea, how, how do they go about actually doing that? I mean, I mean, were they able to, were they able to try to elaborate a little bit on how they could track that?
Yeah, the methodology that they use really is to look at trends in homeownership, trends in rentals. As Susan referred to, it's, part of it is about new housing starts, part of it also is about looking at patterns for home sales, looking at conversions from single-family home to multifamily dwelling, those sorts of things, which the county would have access to. We have historically, when we, I believe, when we've talked to the municipalities, we're only asking them for new housing starts. We're not asking them for sales, for multifamily versus homeownership, et cetera.
Yeah, even if we went for that.
And even if we went for that, we...
It's coming from the county.
Right, exactly. So, we believe that in recommending this study, there are factors that they can put into play here that we cannot easily put into play ourselves. Another one that they put into play is your trends in enrollment in private, parochial, non-public, charter school, et cetera, over time. I can tell you, in my previous district, when we did a enrollment study such as this, one big factor we saw right off the bat was that over about a 15, 20-year period, the percent of students in the district who were enrolling in private and parochials changed dramatically. So, some of our enrollment changes in the district was actually due to that. It wasn't due to housing, per se. So, I think, as Susan referenced, the purpose of this kind of study is not to determine the exact enrollment in every grade at a school for a given year. It's really to say, what do we see as the trends coming up over the next five to 10 years to help us do a little bit more proactive planning? And then, of course, you know, if something shifts in the interim, that's not something we necessarily know at this moment, but it might give us a little better lens on what we can expect in the big picture.
If I may add, just one additional point to all of that. In addition to all the things that have been mentioned, the part of the impression that was made on me when the presentation was done by the folks from the County Planning Commission was the impact of immigration in Montgomery County, in southeast Pennsylvania, clearly in North Penn. More than any other factor right now, immigration is having the biggest impact to us, more than any other factor in what we're seeing in our student population. So, it's significant in North Penn, and it's having a big impact.
Yeah, here, let me just throw this out, again, using the numbers of the Friday night. I have to discount what you're saying, only for the reason I just did a comparison between June 5 and Friday night. We're down 85 kids. So, any projection you would have got out of the county, or even if Tom's Department had done it, we're down 85 kids in kindergarten. It's like, yeah, I took June 5, we're down 85 kids. And the other anomaly, probably to support what Kurt just said, we're up 94 students for 6th grade. So, that's what I'm saying. It is so fluid, so volatile, that all this wonderful data doesn't mean, to me, doesn't mean anything until 10th day enrollment.
And again, I hear what you're saying. The purpose of these projections, though, is not to do staffing for classes. You wouldn't stop doing annual enrollment projections. What this would do would be to give you a lens on, when you're trying to do long-range planning, what are the trends that you can expect to see over a longer period of time? Is it physically possible for one of us to go to, what is it, six or seven municipalities and ferret out all this data and try to put it together?
No, they won't track that.
Sure, but it is, it's an extremely time-consuming process, and it's very complex mathematically to put all those factors together to come up with long-range trends. So, we believe that it would be money well spent to have the county do this. It's at a 25% subsidized rate. So, the $9,000 reflects that 25% discount. We've, I think Kurt said, they, there are several other districts have used them.
Oh, yeah.
And they've been rather pleased with the results that they...
Is this a one-year? Is this a one-year study?
It's a one-year.
This is, this is a study that would project out, I believe, 10 years?
Right, but it's a one...
But it's a one-time. Right, correct.
One-time, excuse me, one-time thing.
Correct. They gave us an option to have a one-year follow-up and a two-year follow-up. At this point, at this point, we're not recommending approving the two-year follow-ups. But we believe that in the future, if we go to the county, if something would shift, then we say, "Hey, we'd really like you to do that two-year follow-up." We're pretty confident they would do that at the cost that they quoted.
Well, I got the one final comment. I was thinking when I sat there at ECP that you didn't collaborate. I'm almost sure that you didn't realize Tom's Department produced that report. In my mind, I would have supported this, probably, if you would have said, "We'll have Tom do what John Strobel used to do, five or six times, and then we'd like to have this other piece at $1,000, $2,000." I probably would have supported that, but I didn't see that take place. Anyway, that's my final comment.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Thank you, Frank. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Pirkowski, second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions?
I just want to thank the donor. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Hey, almost 20 years, he's never missed one yet.
I appreciate it. I am very grateful for the people who, you know, give things to our district. Thank you very much.
Well done. Everybody say thank you? We accept? Yay?
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
Recommend the personnel action as listed, item 1A through C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Pirkowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA7.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA8, A through C, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the alternative placements per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Pirkowski, in a second. Second by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Let's move forward with our finance report. Dr. Mr. Schrock.
Thank you, Mr. President. This report is for the month of July 2016. Cash receipts for July totaled $15,302,113.30, while dispersments totaled $13,287,967.98,[1565.51]